Next, we have a couple items for first briefing. First is the 2019 bond preliminary phase one plan. Dr. Swift?
Thank you, President Johnson and trustees, members of the community who are with us this evening. We have, while we've been working through and on our COVID plans for the previous nine months, we have also been working along through that time to prepare to bring forward a preliminary plan for the phase one of our 2019 bond. Trustees, you're familiar with this plan because we've spent, I want to thank the trustees who serve on the bond committee because we've spent quite a lot of time and in addition, in small trustee work sessions to prepare this information to share publicly and to share with our community this evening. So we'll do this in two parts. I believe Mr. Lautzana will join us. I will share the just a brief introduction and then we'll actually move into the body of the phase one bond plan. Now trustees, as you are aware, we will, we will share this in first briefing this evening and in second briefing next Wednesday evening. And then January through March, we'll be hosting a series of community forum events virtually, at least to start, to inform, fully inform our community and collect their insights and their feedback on the plans that we've laid out. So as we take a look at this 2019 bond, we're so very grateful for the support of our community for our Ann Arbor Public Schools buildings. You can see that we are the fourth largest district in the state of Michigan. We are geographically quite large, covering 125 square miles. And as you're well aware, trustees, that is the entire city of Ann Arbor and parts of eight surrounding townships. We own and operate and maintain 35 buildings and that's about three and a half million square feet, over 723 acres. We work every day with some fundamental core values. It's just absolutely the DNA of our organization. First, that we deliver educational excellence. Certainly, our equity, opportunity, access and social justice is a fundamental core value that we share. Health, safety and wellbeing, and that is certainly coming to play even more so during this COVID year as we've begun to think more deeply about indoor air quality and certainly have been on water quality and all of those issues for some time. Trustees, I know it's very important to you all as leaders in this community and to me and my team, that idea of responsible stewardship and making sure that we deliver on the public funds that have been entrusted to us, that we also are caring for environmental resources and that community trust that we carry with these dollars of this 2019 bond. Our value is to deliver quality, durability and on-time and on-budget projects. I'm going to share some highlights of many of those over recent years in just a moment. But that literally is the heartbeat of this bond is to ensure that we are celebrating and enhancing those neighborhood schools as we are out in Ann Arbor talking with our parents and with our citizens. That number one value in Ann Arbor is that local neighborhood school and finding that quality delivery preschool through 12th grade right in the neighborhoods. And as we turn to this 2019 bond tonight, we think in terms of that long, that long view on our Ann Arbor Public Schools because it is the vision of this 2019 bond to position our schools, not only for this generation, but for generations to come. You're very familiar with this graphic. It is the four cornerstones of our bond and they mirror, as you notice, our core values. Teaching and learning, safety, health and wellbeing, sustainable and environmentally responsible approach to our infrastructure and then efficient and effective support systems and services. So that that fourth corner is about the school buses and the musical instruments and the furnishings and the equipment that we want for our students to enhance their educational experience. Trustees, even though this is a first briefing, this endeavor has been a long time coming and you can take a look at this next timeline to just kind of recall all of the steps that we were taking to get ready to approach this 2019 bond. Back in 2015, we were able, due to historically low, low interest rates at that time, to refinance some bonds and at no additional cost, no additional levy for our taxpayers, we were able to raise about $34 million. This was, if you will, seed, a seed effort to begin that process of updating our average 63-year-old buildings that needed a great deal of updating, particularly coming out of that 2008 downturn and the years when the district had to really cut in many, many places. And I know several of the trustees lived through those years and you know them well. In 2017, we were very grateful to our community to be able to increase our sinking fund. Prior to that time, the sinking fund did not provide enough resource to keep up and maintain our buildings at an appropriate level. So that increase put us to write about $24 million a year on sinking fund. And our goal with that increase of sinking fund was that we would be able to show a beginning on the updating, the keeping up, the catching up, the moving up on our physical properties. During 2018 and 19, we contracted with an outside professional organization to evaluate every single one of our schools. So today on our website, you can pull it up and see an individual book that details the condition of every one of our 35 buildings in the district. It was from that condition assessment report that we actually drew the parameters for the capital bond. So you can see a direct line from the facilities condition index report to the bond that was requested of the community. Gratefully, we were able to achieve approval in our community of that endeavor. And you will see a straight line this evening, trustees, to the phase one plan. So over this previous year, even as we've been working through the situation with our COVID pandemic, a lot of preliminary work has occurred to flesh out a plan that would work for the first 10 years of implementation on this bond. We have engaged last spring with Gilbane, a management firm who will be our partners in helping to ensure that these projects go well. And then thirdly, that professional team, along with Mr. Lautzana and our team, have been working to design the phase one of the bond. Back in June, we were able to sell the first series of the bond sale and that was to mobilize $151 million that will go across these first years of this bond implementation. That brings us to December of 2020, where we're really are looking at this in three consecutive meetings. Our study session last week with the trustees, our public study session, and then this evening a first briefing and next Wednesday, a second briefing. The highlights of the progress that we've made with that 2015 and 2017 efforts, these were just the seed efforts to get us started on catching up and keeping up with our buildings, paving and roofing and HVAC, approximately $30 million in those three areas. We've added air conditioning to allow us to be able to do summer programming. Outdoor learning spaces have been renewed and they desperately needed that indoor and outdoor learning spaces. Gym floors replaced, new playgrounds installed at 21 elementary and K-8 campuses. That's a significant endeavor. We knew that the playground is the magnet. It's a great location in every neighborhood. Our playground equipment was outdated and in many, many instances needed to be brought up to code and that effort has occurred. We've replaced running tracks. Tennis courts have been completely refurbished. Thirty-two of our tennis courts, they were in quite desperate need of that refurbishment. And we've also replaced the turf on our three comprehensive fields. Significant remodel projects at A2 STEAM at Northside, we brought that school to a much larger campus to meet the demand there. Y5 through eighth grade campus, our pathways campus, Allen Elementary that experienced a flood back in 2016 and we remodeled that school for our students to be able to re-inhabit that school. Mitchell Elementary and Bryant, most recently Bryant-Pattengill. Trustees, you see the photos here. You have toured those schools. They're beautiful remodels. Another highlight from our work over recent years is the freestanding modular classroom additions. We knew that housing development in the areas and increasing enrollment would require additional seats. And yet the trustees and the board at that time wanted to be responsible. So we first deployed the modular additions and of course, we'll be reconsidering those for more permanent additions according to this plan. We've done tremendous work around sustainability and environmental responsibility with our infrastructure in the district, but we're only getting started on that endeavor. Here are some of the highlights. Opening and repurposing the Freeman Campus, 40 acres, 20 acres of forest and 20 acres of grassland. That's been repurposed into the Freeman Environmental Learning Center. We've installed solar arrays across many of our campuses, several of our campuses where the roofs were in good enough shape to hold the solar installation. And in doing that, we've saved enough energy each year to power 100 Michigan homes or three elementary schools each year. We've installed energy-efficient LED lighting in planted trees in attended to stormwater. Again, you can see throughout these preliminary steps prior to the bond work that we were still cleaving to the four cornerstones of improving educational environment for our students and children, our safety, health and wellbeing, attending to sustainability and then also watching our effective and efficient support systems and services. So what we're sharing with you this evening, trustees and with our community as well, is this pivot, this shift over recent years and really over the previous decade, we've been just catching up on our buildings, but we've not in any way been able to significantly move up or to take that long-range look at redesigning our campuses for future generations. So we know the values that we hold and the values that bring us here tonight. They are about equality education in that setting for every child. We know that our buildings are in need of significant capital investment in order to bring them up to speed for our students. We know that our educational program, educational programming, our teaching and learning, our teaching and professional staff and leaders. We have an amazing Ann Arbor Public Schools system and yet in many cases, our physical environment is in need of redesign, renewal, upgrade and re-envisioning. So we've received these schools from generations that came before us. They made sacrifices. They looked ahead to see where we would need to be. And we are the fortunate beneficiaries of those labors. And so now it's our turn, trustees, and I appreciate your courage and leadership to place this bond. And we will forever and eternally be grateful to our community for seeing the need and supporting this effort. And so now it is our responsibility as good stewards to prepare for not just our children and grandchildren, but for a major endeavor that will serve many generations of Ann Arbor's children. And so the work that we're engaging in with this 2019 bond is about planting trees under whose shade we will not sit, but we send this as an investment into the future for future generations of children. So I've given just kind of the introduction, the opening component of this phase one, preliminary phase one plan of our 2019 bond. This bond will cover the years 2020 to 2030. It is a preliminary package, trustees, as you are well aware. We look forward to our discussion this evening. I and my team will be taking close notes as we listen to your discussion. We are looking forward to setting our calendar for mid-January through the end of March to be out in the community and collecting feedback from our community. We'll do that in many, many ways. You'll hear more about that shortly. At this time, it is my honor to welcome Ms. Jill Minnick, Mr. Emile Lautzana. I believe, yes, Mr. Bernard Rice is joining us also, Executive Director of Facilities. And let's dive into the phase one package, if you will. Mr. Lautzana?
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Swift. Good evening, President Johnson, Board of Trustees, Ann Arbor community. I'm going to share my screen here. I'm pleased to be here tonight to share the 2019 bond preliminary phase one plan for the first 10 years of the program. We will start out by reviewing our bond campaign commitments, overview the plan and some of its major components. We'll look at a map of staging plans for major construction projects. We'll look at investment timelines by sector and by level, detailing the work at each Ann Arbor school and building. We'll discuss the community engagement opportunities upcoming that Dr. Swift just mentioned, some supporting documents that we'll be developing and some next steps. So looking at our campaign commitments, and this is a slide from the campaign that kind of puts a lot of things in perspective for me and hopefully for others on the generational nature of this investment. This chart shows the year that each Ann Arbor school or building was constructed. And you can kind of see the waves. There was a post-World War II. There were five schools constructed in a very short order in three or four years. And in that generation, if you will, they built eight schools in 22 years. Then with the, with the ending of World War II and the baby boom and a lot of urbanization that was happening, the Ann Arbor Public Schools built an incredible 22 new schools in 24 years. Really a school a year, sometimes two in a year. Very aggressive school construction schedule. And then since then, in the last 31 years or so, we have opened three new schools. Our schools are aged. Their average year built is 1956. And well, today, the average age is 64 years old. We're also somewhat unique in Michigan. We're one of only 12 states that has no state-level funding for school construction projects. So we're on our own here in Ann Arbor and we're so grateful for the support of our community with this bond that provides the resources that otherwise are not available through the state of Michigan for this endeavor. And we did conduct a facilities condition assessment with an outside engineering assessment group. And they use, they walked, spent time and significant time in every single building and generated detailed reports of the investment needed at our schools and they used the facilities condition index, which is demonstrated here a little bit. And essentially, that's a number that tells you how the condition of your building. Is it in good condition, fair condition, poor condition, critical, or has it reached the point where it needs so much investment that you would consider replacing that asset? And they found that our buildings were generally in fair to good condition, but as they looked down the road, that we would be sliding into the poor and critical condition pretty quickly in the school district. And the investment level was quite, quite high. And those reports are available on the website. Again, individual reports for every AAPS school. So this is the ballot language. It just is the language that was on the ballot that was approved by the voters and it provides the guardrails for the bond spending. And on November 5th, 2019, voters approved the capital bond program. So as Dr. Swift was reviewing, teaching and learning, safety, health and wellbeing, sustainable, environmentally responsible infrastructure and efficient and effective support systems are the goals or the cornerstones of the bond program. And in the campaign informational literature that was provided to the community, we had information like this detailing each of these goal areas. So teaching and learning has some key themes at the top of the slide and then the supporting infrastructure that would, would provide for, you know, supporting and enhancing those key themes. And I'm not going to read through all of this. This is all available on the website and people can take their time and read this in more detail. We have the same detail on safety, health and wellbeing, sustainable and environmentally responsible infrastructure as well as efficient support systems and services. And in conclusion, and I'll just, I'll read this because these are really important. This is the values and this is the rationale for this bond program that Dr. Swift had in her introduction. "The Ann Arbor community values equality education for every child. Our buildings and grounds are aging in need of major capital investment. We know that the quality of the built environment directly impacts student achievement and the core mission of the district. And we have received beautiful schools and properties from previous generations. And now it is our responsibility as good stewards to prepare for the future generations in AAPS." And so now we'll transition into the preliminary bond phase one plan for the first decade of the program. Some of the key components that we'll talk about this evening include early construction projects at every school, summer construction projects, the construction of staging facilities, major construction projects and continuing to enhance and refresh support infrastructure, furnishings and equipment. So early projects are designed to provide equity across the district in terms of access to amenities and programmatic opportunities. So some of these early projects will include solar and other renewable energy resources, air conditionings and air conditioning and air quality improvements. Some of our buildings are fully air-conditioned. Many of them are not. And in our sort of COVID-informed future, this provides not only the opportunity to bring that air conditioning to all of our buildings, but also as we're doing that, do the things that we know are important to mitigate and minimize risk of disease transmission in our buildings through enhanced ventilation and filtration systems, energy-efficient LED lighting, outdoor learning enhancements, music, art, science and athletics improvements, small group and special needs, learning spaces and continued replacement and enhancement of that core infrastructure of the district, instruments, furnishings, et cetera. And so intermediate summer projects are included in the, in the plan for school whose major project occurs later in the plan. They provide a custom improvement for each school and care will be taken not to invest in things in the summer project that then, when a major project comes to a school in subsequent years, that that investment is, is lost. And these are two examples of what recent summer mobilizations. On the left is Bryant Elementary's Media Center and on the right Pioneer High School's cafeteria. This is kind of the scale of work that with, with some pretty intensive planning and coordination, we're able to get in there in June, tear some things apart, put it all back together by the end of August and reoccupy the spaces in September. Staging school construction within the average age of 64 years, there is work needed at our buildings that is neither practical nor financially responsible to try to complete in a summer, you know, 10-week summer mobilization. And so staging locations will provide for the temporary relocation of a school community while construction activities are completed at their home school. The plan includes staging locations in each quadrant of the city to be utilized over the next 10 years to complete major projects at all AAPS elementary and K-8 schools. Major projects are really the heart of this bond program. This is the opportunity to do the deep work on our schools that will prepare them to serve this district for years to come. In the development of major projects, we will evaluate whether a school building should be replaced, undergo a deep retrofit or some combination that preserves a part of the building and replaces another. For instance, the cafeteria and the gym are in pretty good shape and they're well laid out. So we'll save those elements and replace the classroom wings or replace the entire building or mostly renovate and maybe do an addition on a building. When we look at, at that question of which of those options are best for a particular school, there are a number of evaluation criteria we will use. Academic program implications is a big one. Our buildings, many of them have been added on to multiple times over the years and the resultant floor plan and programmatic arrangement is far from ideal. It's a long distance from one end of the building to the other. Things that you would hope are next to each other and working together are located in disparate locations. So those are academic program implications. Of course, construction first cost is a consideration as well as long-term operating costs. It may cost incrementally more to replace a building through the bond program, but then that renovated building, which costs less to renovate, will cost more to operate over time and would have a greater draw on general fund resources. Of course, impacts on health, wellbeing and universal access. In a renovated building, you may be looking at saving some core infrastructure like plumbing or duct work that might not be as healthy as a new systems and universal access. We have a number of buildings that are what we call split level designs. So the first floor is actually half a, half a story up. So you have a staircase essentially to get to the first floor. And then we have these very extensive ramp systems to allow for a universal access that are unsightly and difficult to navigate for people who try to use them. And then of course, environmental sustainability, looking at embodied carbon in our existing buildings and long-term operating carbon emissions. So these are some of the factors that we will be looking at. and long-term operating carbon emissions. So these are some of the factors that we will be looking at uh, in, in planning for major projects. Um, school investment prioritization consideration. So this looks at how do we decide where to start in this bond program? What are the criteria that we consider? Um, this is a, this is a twenty-plus year endeavor and we have to start somewhere and um, some of the things that we are looking at are capital investment needs, matriculation and housing development pressures. Capital needs is one of the main criteria that we're looking at in prior to prioritizing the school construction schedule. Uh, this table is uh, from the facilities condition assessment that was conducted um, prior to the, the bond approval. And the, the numbers in next to, for instance, Carpenter School, two hundred and eighty-three, that's the dollars per square foot that the report says would need to be invested into Carpenter Elementary over the next ten years to keep it in good condition. Um, and then you can see Mitchell, two hundred and sixty, Dickens, two hundred and forty-three. And at the very bottom here, we have Allen with fifty-five dollars and that's because of the flood at Allen and the major reconstruction that happened there. We've also updated this a little bit with Bryant Patengill. Uh, closer to the bottom now due to the heavy investment, the two last summers at those schools. Uh, they got a lot of work and they're in much better shape than when the condition assessment was conducted. And you'll see here that our elementary schools have some of the highest needs, um, followed by our high schools. And then finally, our middle schools do need quite a bit of investment, but not as much as the uh, high schools and certainly not the elementary schools. Another uh, consideration in this uh, design of this program is matriculation. We want to minimize the amount of time that uh, the number of times that a student is disrupted by uh, construction. What we don't want to have happen is uh, a third grader is disrupted at elementary school. They go to middle school, they're displaced and disrupted at middle school. And then finally they go to high school and they're disrupted by construction for a third time. Um, so with the highest level of need at the elementary level, the plan does begin with the elementaries, but then goes on to high schools, allowing for that gap to account for the matriculation. And then it, the plan closes or finishes with middle school major projects. Uh, recognizing that middle schools are late in the bond program. Over the next four years, all five middle schools will receive significant investments starting this summer uh, with school-wide air conditioning and ventilation improvements, new lights and ceilings, fire suppression systems, and some custom projects at each school to uh, address some particular areas of need at the five middle schools. And finally, another big consideration is housing development. Um, this is a slide, uh, this image is from uh, the pre-last year's housing development study. This study is being updated and we'll have that in the, in the first part of the coming year, an updated housing development study. But basically this look on this map of Ann Arbor's, uh, our school district here, the yellow indicates um, developments that are approved and under construction currently. And the green uh, sh- shaded areas are developments that are in the planning review process and maybe bringing students to our district if they were to be approved and constructed. And so we have this mapped by uh, school uh, enrollment zones. And this provides information that informs the way the plan is put together. And so it's important to remember that um, all but one of our schools are in the city of Ann Arbor and that's the, that's the large kind of uh, heart-shaped red area in the middle is the school, is the city of Ann Arbor, but the white shaded area which reaches out into the townships is the overall AAPS attendance boundary. And many of these outlying areas that are not in the city, um, such as the Plymouth Road Corridor, Pontiac Trail Area, um, Packard and Washtenaw, Ann Arbor Celine and the Jackson Road Corridor all have significant uh, current populations and also a lot of upcoming housing development. Um, so we're going to zoom into this uh, black box area now and look at the uh, staging plan for the elementaries and the K eights. So um, this plan essentially is looking at four quadrants of the city. The southeast is in yellow, the northeast in blue, the northwest in orange and the southwest in purple. And looking at the southeast where the plan begins, uh, the plan calls for constructing a new Mitchell School while the current Mitchell School remains occupied. Once the new school is constructed, the uh, Mitchell student population would move into their new building and the old Mitchell School would be used as a staging location for a number of years for the other schools in that sector, starting with Burns Park, which has a high level of investment needs. Then Angel, then Pittsfield and ending with Patengill. Um, Allen and Bryant and Carpenter, we feel do not need to stage in order to accomplish the work at those schools. The plan then proceeds with the same logic to the northeast sector, then to the southwest and concludes with the northwest. And so uh, don't feel that you have to squint and try to read all of this. I just, I include the entire plan here just so we can see some of the patterns. Uh, we will zoom into each of these sectors individually. Uh, but you can see shaded here, the, the sort of light green and light yellow. Those are early projects at schools. And over here, you can see in the middle schools, we have those significant early upgrades at the middle schools. And then here is the new Mitchell in the dark blue new construction. And you can see the schools that staged through the Mitchell and the same logic of staging carrying through the plan. I will zoom in now to the southeast sector. So you can see at Carpenter, for instance, this summer we'll be doing air conditioning and new lights at Carpenter, Burns Park, Angel and at the current Mitchell School. Uh, we'll also start planning for the construction of the new Mitchell project at the bottom in dark blue. Once that new Mitchell is constructed, the uh, current Mitchell population will move into their new building and uh, Burns Park will stage through the old Mitchell, followed by Angel, Pittsfield and Patengill. Um, and again, Allen, Bryant and Carpenter, we feel do not need to stage in order to complete the, the work at those schools. Here is the northeast sector. Uh, this is a challenging sector for us. It is the most challenging. Uh, there is a lot of development pressure there. There's also some uh, issues with how we might accomplish staging. And our intention is this coming year to deeply study. Uh, we have, I'd say six possible, at least six possible options for how to accomplish staging there. None of them is, is ideal yet. And so we're going to sharpen our pencils with our professional partners and put some time into studying this sector so we can find the best possible option that works for this uh, sector of town. And there are some early mobilizations indicated here as well. Uh, the southwest sector is also uh, quite a bit of enrollment pressure uh, along the Ann Arbor Celine Corridor and in, in that area in general. Would have those early projects with AC and lighting at Dickens and Lakewood, then at Eberwhite and Bah, and then finally Lawton in twenty twenty-three. A project planning, a new construction, and then the staging of uh, Eberwhite, Bah and Lawton through um, the staging location uh, with Dickens and Lakewood not needing to stage uh, for their major project. And then the northwest elementaries and the K eights. Um, the K eights, you can see in the, in the, in the diagram and the, below, both of our K eights currently are in the northwest sector and are uh, located in such a place that once we determine a staging location in that area, they would be uh, able to stage through that staging location. Um, and this is where we introduce in light blue, uh, twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight um, intermediate projects because this sector is further out in the plan. Uh, we've, we've introduced these intermediate projects to give them some improvements earlier before we get to the major project construction later in the program. And again, the early projects are indicated here. Uh, the middle schools, the district has five middle schools. You can see the attendance boundaries of those middle schools at the bottom of this image. Um, the, the green indicates those major renovations that are underway uh, at the middle schools, recognizing that they're further out. There are also intermediate projects indicated and then finally the major projects happening in twenty thirty-two and beyond. And um, high school is, is an interesting group. You can see our, our comprehensive high school boundaries here. We also have two other high schools, Community High School and Pathways to Success. Uh, Community High School is the only high school without full air conditioning. And so we've moved, we, the same program that's bringing air conditioning and other improvements to the middle schools, we're mobilizing those same teams on Community High School so that they will be fully air conditioned. It is a three-story building. And that third floor does suffer uh, when we have uh, excessive temperatures. Uh, we're also really excited about a major project at Pathways to Success early in the program. Um, that, that uh, population unfortunately is an old elementary school and these are high school kids and the building is not really uh, laid out uh, appropriately for them. So we're really excited to enhance that building and give it much more of a community college feel, uh, much more of the kind of amenities that you would expect in a, in a high school setting, including a new gymnasium, which they, they currently don't really have an adequate facility for, for recreation and for exercise. And uh, some other amenities to bring them up to, up to a place where it feels like a high school or a community college. Um, we also have some uh, initial projects at the comprehensive high schools. And then there are major projects happening uh, later in the program. Finally, we have our, our other buildings, um, preschool. Uh, we feel that that, that building is in pretty good shape and we're going to continue to enhance it uh, through summer work and, and work on, you know, holiday breaks and things like that to keep that in good shape. Uh, Freeman, we're going to continue to work on building that programming and bringing along the uh, physical property enhancements that will support the programming. Um, the ballast building is an interesting um, one for us. We're in a a place where we haven't had a lot of people in the ballast building. About all we're doing there right now is, you know, making sure the payroll gets cut and um, we're able to do a little bit of shipping and receiving. Um, and we've been working virtually for a long time now. And so we'd like to conduct uh, an office utilization analysis in twenty twenty-one to really study what, what does uh, what does office work look like? I know a lot of organizations are, our, our Ford Motor Company and GM are doing these studies to see, you know, do we really need all this office space? How do we work in the future? What does you know, virtual work look like? Is that more efficient in some cases? So we really want to study that um, and make some recommendations on how we might make our, our office operations more efficient, but also more accessible to the public and, and public facing as opposed to where our, the ballast building currently is kind of inaccessible to the public and it's hidden from view. And we'd like to have a more, much more public facing uh, administrative building. And then our transportation building, you know, we have hundreds of bus drivers in this school district. And um, their facility is, is in pretty bad shape. And so we want to make sure that they have a, you know, a nice place to I wait for their shift and to get their training, et cetera. So we're going to look at some improvements at the bus uh, transportation building as well. So some of the other investments that really aren't on a school-by-school basis, it's more about refreshing and maintaining and enhancing our infrastructure. So music, science and the arts, uh, infrastructure and equipment, buses, technology, roofing and solar energy, paving and stormwater and our building management system. And we'll look at each of these uh, briefly. So investments in, in music arts and science, theater updates and modernization of the rigging systems, furnishings for these classrooms and labs, musical instruments and storage systems for musical instruments and continued steam lab updates and improvements. Um, continue to refresh our, our bus fleet. We've got a hundred and thirty-two buses and we need to every year kind of buy some new ones, retire the older ones. And um, we're, we're really excited about, uh, we received the first of four electric buses that the district was able to purchase through uh, an Eagle grant and we, which was made possible by the Volkswagen Settlement Funds. And we're bringing those online and we will continue to study those and, and learn from that technology. Continuing to invest in our, in our technology, our infrastructure and security, our district systems and our data systems. And of course, our student learning and staff technology will continue to get enhanced and refreshed throughout this program. And our building management systems are currently um, they're all functional, but there, there, there are lots of different systems and many of these systems are proprietary, limiting the number of vendors that can access these. And so we're going to be updating and integrating these systems into open source platforms, uh, maintaining high levels of security and everything, but making it so that we don't have uh, five or six different building management softwares running independently and that this is an integrated system and a modernized system. We've also developed a multi-year roofing and solar improvement plan. Uh, we've made massive investment in our roofing infrastructure in the last three years, which is great. Um, you know, when I, when I started a little over two years ago, uh, there were a lot of calls about roof leaks. Every time it rained, myself and Mr. Rice would just kind of hold on to the edge of our seat and wait, you know, and see how many we'd call in and if we, how many contractors we could scrape together to go out and do these emerg- emergency repairs. Uh, that's not the case anymore. We very rarely have significant leaks in the school district and working with our professional partners, we've developed this plan to uh, make sure we stay in a good shape. And as we're replacing roof sections that have good solar access, we're going to continue to install those solar systems that Dr. Swift mentioned. It currently, but well, once we finish up this last set of installations this spring, we'll be generating the equivalent of three elementary schools worth of electricity every year. And we're really excited to expand upon that. Uh, we've done the same with our paving. Uh, we've invested heavily in our pavement infrastructure. It's not, you know, it's, it's certainly not as exciting as buying musical instruments or putting in a skylight or doing a classroom addition, but um, you know, potholes make everybody frustrated and we want to make sure that uh, we, we maintain that infrastructure. And as we're doing major parking lot reconstruction, what we've done over the last few years is make uh, stormwater management improvements and we intend to continue to make those stormwater management improvements as we reconstruct parking lots and also look at non-motorized transportation, making sure that we have good uh, routes for, for buses and pedestrians to access our schools. There was an ethic in the past that the car was king. And, and we recognize that cars and buses still need to obviously get to our campuses, but we want to make sure we have safe walking routes and safe biking routes on our campuses as well. And so uh, we'll talk briefly about community engagement opportunities that are coming up. Uh, so uh, community stakeholders will have a number of opportunities to uh, hear more about the bond program and to ask questions and understand more and give their feedback. Um, there will be community organizational presentations, public town halls, uh, some topical presentations on a few subject areas. Uh, we'll be doing some surveys. And we'll also begin accepting applications for our bond advisory committee and working groups in January. Um, and there will also be these school design committees. Prior to each major project, we will form a school design committee, compositive uh, leadership, building leadership, teachers, students and also um, obviously lots, uh, community members and that school design committee uh, will be part of reviewing and giving input on the major project at each school. And that's another uh, opportunity that's coming to each uh, school community. And of course, we'll have a website and uh, lots of discussion at Board of Education meetings. Um, some additional materials we're working on for uh, the upcoming uh, engagement through January, February and March, um, COVID-informed design brief. Uh, we've learned the design community has been um, very much uh, engaged obviously in, in how to make buildings safer in a, in a pandemic and, and not only will this inform any future pandemic that our buildings may um, may be uh, uh, challenged by may be challenged by, but we'll also be safer and healthier when we have our usual flu season or measles outbreak or other health concerns. We'll be having an updated housing development study, a communications plan and various community feedback tools and materials. So finally, our progress and our next steps. We had the facilities condition assessment. We had our work with the trustees and the board committee. We did select the Gilbane Building Company as our program management firm. And our team has been working throughout the year, developing the plan that we just shared. There was a series one sale in June. We're doing some board meetings in December here. And then January through March, we will have a community engagement process. And we'll begin to form the bond advisory groups with the application process beginning in the first quarter of 2021. And sometime around April, 2021, we'll gather up all that community engagement feedback and provide a report to the Board of Education. And then sometime in spring or summer 2021, the bond advisory groups will begin meeting. And I believe that's my last slide and thank you for trustees. And I'm, I'm happy to hear your comments and answer any questions that you may have.
First off, thank you so much for the presentation. I should say, say that. I, I agree with the, the trustees. It's, it's very well done. You know, feel like you've kept us all in the loop throughout and there, there isn't, there aren't any surprises. There's, there have only been improvements. So thank you so much on that. Our last comment is about community involvement. I, I love the, the plans around community involvement. I know when the bond was being was being shared with the, with the community and we were trying to get the bond passed. That was a big piece. Will we be involved? Will we be, be involved? And, and I love to see that that's, that that's coming out and that we're keeping that promise. And I do hope that the community gets engaged either through serving on one of those advisory committees or attending some of the events so that everyone is in the loop and we're getting folks feedback. So thanks to the, 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 the bond team for, for putting that together as well. And, and last, last thing, love the pathways idea. You know, I really think that that's really important and, and and really look forward to seeing that, that develop. So thank you so much, everyone, for your hard work.
Thank you.